We'll call this a special meeting to order on, what is it today, Tuesday, January 21st at three o'clock. It's a special meeting, we have one item on the agenda, that's interview with Executive Director Candidate David Leaker. Welcome David.
Thank you.
Glad to have you here. Some opening comments. We've got two hours set aside. What we've done with all of our candidates is a first ten or fifteen, twenty minutes, however you want to go, talk about yourself, your background, your experience, and why you want this position, and all that good stuff. And then we've got questions from six buckets that will go around culture fit, management style, staffing, leadership, strategic planning board experience, that's the third bucket, change leadership, problem solving, budget and finance, and then wrap up. Pace yourself, there's, we'll be going around the circle, there are thirty-five questions, so if you want to get out of here early, or if you want to go long, your answers will dictate.
Well, sometimes I ramble, sometimes I'm short and concise, so...
Whichever, whichever works for you, so again, welcome, and if you want to start off with some remarks, that would be perfect.
Well, yeah, I guess I can kind of give you a brief background, I don't know if everybody's familiar with, you know, where I grew up and my progression through Parks and Recreation profession, but my dad, I've grown up in Parks and Recreation my whole life, my dad was the director in Grand Forks from nineteen seventy-seven and nineteen ninety-seven. Prior to that, he was the Recreation Superintendent Lincoln, Nebraska, where I was kind of imprinted on the Husker tradition, so it's been a rough, rough twenty years for me here, and I'm not willing to jump on the NDSU bandwagon, but I'm sticking with my Huskers. But anyway, so I feel I have Parks and Recreation, Parks and Recreation profession, I've got that lifestyle in my blood. I don't consider myself a passionate guy, but I guess if you would say that, that I have a passion for Parks and Recreation. I mean, just growing up with him being a Recreation Superintendent Lincoln, Nebraska, and then at that time, it wasn't called the Executive Director in Grand Forks, but he was the Director of Parks and Recreation in Grand Forks, and basically, just growing up with the Grand Forks Park District, Grand Forks family, that was, that's what I knew. Parks and Recreation is what I knew. He, you know, he kiddingly said, "Don't go into Parks and Recreation," because, I mean, it's tough to get a job in that, and I took his, I took his advice and went Industrial Technology, which is IT, which I also known as, I tried engineering, but I was very good at math and science, and just didn't like the engineering profession, so I went Industrial Technology. And upon graduating, took a couple of years, looked and tried to find myself, and I kept seeing this job in Beulah, North Dakota come up. I came up two years in a row as the Parks Director out there, so on one trip back for a North Dakota NDSU basketball game, I saw that job in the Grand Forks Herald and applied for it. That was nineteen ninety-three, and I got that job. People asked me why I'd want to go out to Beulah, North Dakota, but it was a great experience, it was a one-man show. I got to work with five commissioners directly, you know, at that small a town, it was considered a working board. I got to work with the Corps of Engineers, I got to work with City of Beulah officials, and I took my experience on rebuilding Craft Memorial Field in Grand Forks out to Beulah, and we rebuilt their baseball field out there too, so I've got a baseball background, I played along with Commissioner Papacek at UND, and that's kind of my love, is taking care of ball fields and playing on ball fields, but, so that led me to Beulah. I spent six years out there, I think I had a very successful tenure in Beulah. They were amazed that I had that, I guess the big thing was mechanical ability and just kind of a jack-of-all-trades, and that came from growing up with my dad, who I remember telling a third grade class he could fix anything, and he could. And following his leadership in Parks and Recreation, I just felt I was a natural for it. Was out in Beulah to, since nineteen ninety-nine, and probably in ninety-seven, I heard that there was possible job that might be coming open in Fargo. They were looking at creating a Director of Parks, they'd never had a Director of Parks, so they were working on creating this position, so over the next two years, and at spring and fall conferences, I would pester Roger and say, "So when is this job opening?" You know, and he kept putting me off, and kept putting me off, and I think at the joint conference down in Aberdeen one year, he said, "Well, yeah, it's going to be opening up this, this winter, Dave," so I interviewed, or I ended up submitting my application in November, December, interviewed in January, and was lucky enough to be offered that position, and end up taking the job February first. I had, we had to close out the year in Beulah, and being a one-man show, I had to make sure our assistant knew how things were operating, and then moved to Fargo February first, nineteen ninety-nine, and I've been Parks Director since then. That was up until Roger's retirement, and when I applied for the executive position at that time, and was one of the final two applicants on that position, and unfortunately, he wasn't selected at that time, but did they have, did have the opportunity to move into the deputy role, so I think that was a good opportunity, a chance to influence people. And it wasn't necessarily more interaction with the board, I think I've always had a good relationship with the board, even when I was Parks Director, because at that time, Roger didn't know that question, he would direct the board to talk to the directors, and so we had great interaction with the board, and so I've had, you know, the six years of interaction in Beulah, plus my twenty-one years with Fargo Park District of working with the board. In that time, as you can see by my cover letter and resume, I've had the, you know, operations is my background, maintenance and being kind of a problem solver is my forte, and I've had the opportunity to be a lot of, be a part of the biggest department in the Fargo Park District, and with that, you get to work with all the other departments, because operations is kind of the backbone of the Park District, so I've had a chance to work with, you know, all the different departments, help support the different departments, work with the commissioners. It's given me a lot of great experience, both construction, development of parks. I think in those twenty years working with Roger and Jim Larson, that those two developed a great system of creating neighborhood parks for the, you know, residents of Fargo. So much in fact, that I know Roger had gone out to Bismarck to kind of help them, show them how they develop parks at relatively inexpensive cost of the Park District. You know, we get the land donated, and then we assess the park back to the homeowner. So in the twenty years, I've had a ton of experience, just working with everything listed on my cover letter and resume, and that adds a lot of institutional experience to this position, that, you know, while I know you've had four great candidates, and they all have their expertise in certain areas, they, they don't have the expertise in Fargo that I have, so, and especially the last six months of being the interim director. Nobody, nobody has that experience, except for myself, so I think this is a great opportunity for myself, I think it's a great opportunity for the Fargo Park District and citizens of Fargo. So with that, I'll let you turn it over to your guys' questions. All right. Oh, one other thing I'd like to add, I've also, you know, been a part of NDRPA, in kind of their leadership committees, Board of Directors, I've been president. I've also been the first, I believe, don't quote me on this, I don't know if Bob Johnson ever was Certified Park and Rec Professional, but the first employee at the Park District to be certified, and I know now Dave Beetz is a second employee, so. I think I've done everything I possibly could do to get myself ready for this position, and I think I've got the networking abilities throughout the state of North Dakota and in the upper Midwest to, if I don't have a question, I can find the questions, I can get the questions, so, yeah.
Great. Thank you. Let's turn it over on you.
What three aspects of your present role, you can say?
Probably the most satisfaction is just being able to, you know, interact with staff. I know as busy as we are right now, I don't, I don't have enough time to get around everybody like I should, but the days that I can actually just get out there and talk and work through issues with them, is kind of the most satisfying day. Some days, you're just busy putting fires out, you know, whether it's talking to, you know, issues it might have in one department, maybe a possible complaint, but the actually best part of it is just working every day with the staff and being there to, to help guide them along. And that's actually when you know you've accomplished something. The days you run around with your hair on fire, it's kind of tough to rationalize anything got done, but of course, things are getting done, so. Three things, right? The other one, I mean, I love being part of, of projects. I know we've got a couple of big projects working on right now with the sports complex and Block Nine coming up. It's awesome for the city of Fargo that we're able to do these things, and I look forward, I look forward to the day we can, you know, cut the ribbon at Block Nine. I think that's going to be a, a great venue for downtown. I know we've always talked about trying to make it cash flow, but I consider that just as any other park in town, and it needs to be subsidized by some tax funds, but it's going to be a great opportunity for the people downtown that, you know, do pay taxes, and it's going to be a great setting downtown for people to gather. The third thing is, is being a problem solver, I guess. You know, we've got our four core values, and, you know, sometimes the question's asked, what core value most exemplifies you, and I would say a solution engineer, just because that's what I've grown up with my whole life. I mentioned earlier, I, my dad could fix anything, and I don't know if I've ever seen him fail, and, and I like to think that people think the same thing of me, is, well, let's go ask Leaker, because he'll figure something out, so. Just being a problem solver and, and being able to lead people, so.
All right. Tell us about your proudest professional accomplishment, what was it and what were the results?
The proudest professional one, I think, you know, there's several, but I think the one that I think is probably maybe one of the coolest things we did at the Park District was in two thousand and four, when the World Fast Pitch Tournament wanted to come to Fargo, and the issue they had, they needed two championship fields, and down at Michelson, we basically only had the one championship field, and we had to figure out how to come up with that second field, and it was either rebuild diamond number four somehow, or upon looking at it, we already had the lights at Jack Williams, we had the seating at Jack Williams, it was a venue for two World Series previously, so in working with the Legion and working with our operation staff, we devised a plan that we would come in there in the, basically in the fall the year before, install a new, or, how was that? Yeah, install a new irrigation system in the fall. In the spring, we would come in there, and for May and June, or, we installed an irrigation system, got the field up and running, they played their home schedule up until the middle of June, and then we basically had thirty days till the World Fast Pitch Tournament started. So our plan was to use Jack Williams as the main diamond, and then Michelson number two as our secondary diamond, which they had the lighting levels that would work for that. So we basically had thirty days to turn a baseball field into a softball field, and if you've ever looked at some of the before and after pictures, it was, it was pretty cool what our operation staff was able to do in thirty days. And immediately following that tournament, we turned it right back into a Legion field, which helped regrade their infield, they got a new irrigation system out of it, and, and both parties won, the Legion won, the Fargo Park District won, and the World ISC Tournament had only done that one other time in their history of turning a baseball field into a softball field, and they said this was by far one of the better venues they've ever were able to play in, so. I know in, in the grand scheme of things, it wasn't that big, but it was just pretty cool what, what we were able to do.
So on the other end of the spectrum, what, what's one professional mistake you've made that you wish you could go back and fix?
Well, I know we don't like to focus on the negatives, or even remember the negatives, because a good defensive back will always forget about the play he just got burnt on, so. I don't, well, okay, so here's one that I'll, I'll remember and I'll never forget. A professional negative, it was probably in my first two years at the Park District Operations Director. I was in charge of remodeling the South High Tennis Court bathhouse, and along with Vic Larrano, who would, who would run the carpenters and contractors, and getting everything ready to, you know, clean things up, paint, fix, whatever, and, how did that go down? Vic had submitted a payment, or submitted a, a pay request on my desk that the project was done. Without even looking at it, I just figured it was done, I signed off on it, turned it over to Roger. Of course, Roger, his area is construction, and wants to go see how everything turned out. So he goes down there one morning, and I'd already signed off that it was done, completed, whatever, didn't talk to Vic. Roger calls up and says, "Can I meet you and Vic down here right now?" So I was like, "Oh, great, what happens?" So anyway, went down there, the punch list hadn't been done, the trim hadn't been painted, doors weren't done, I mean, it was just a total fiasco, and Roger goes, "How can you sign off on this, that this is completed? Look at this, look at this, look at this." You know, so he pointed all these facts, and I said, "You know, Rog, I made a mistake. I didn't talk to Vic, I assumed it was done, and it's on me." And he kind of turned his back and walked away, and I was kind of standing there, Vic and I were going. He walked away, and, you know, ended up driving off or whatever, and I don't know if it was later that day or later that week, he goes, "You know what, Leaker? You're lucky you told me the truth and said it was your fault, because I was loaded for bear, and that's the best thing you could have done." So in one thing, it was not doing the right thing to make sure all the construction was done before signing off on it, and on the other hand, it was probably the best thing to earn respect from Roger at that time, and that was the one time I think Roger's ever come unglued with myself. So that was a mistake. And I know it was very small, but it probably helped earn me more cred than negatives.
I hear you. Thanks.
Okay, what factors make you the most effective at work?
What factors? I think, you know, having a good relationship with all the staff. I've kind of said this in some of my, our meetings today, I said, "I'm not, I'm not going to come here and tell you I have a hundred percent support of the staff, but I can, I can pretty much guarantee I probably got eighty-five, north of eighty-five percent support of the staff," and I think that goes back to kind of just being genuine, being able to communicate with everybody, stopping by and saying hi. I've been chastised in the past, I know Roger's given me a little grief that I want to work for the maintenance department, but if there's a lightbulb out, I'm going to fix it. If there's something wrong here or there, I have the ability to fix it without calling maintenance. But you know what? That earns a lot of respect from everybody. I mean, somebody sees you're willing to do something, if you're willing to pick up a bathroom after it's been destroyed or something, that earns a lot of respect from staff, and, you know, and they always say integrity is what you do when nobody's watching. The thing is, everybody's watching, and the littlest thing you could do could, could earn you the most respect in their eyes, and on the contrary, if you do something that's not in line with good values, that could be very detrimental to you. And I think I have the ability just to prove to everybody that I am, I am, I always said, and I probably said in my cover, I don't ask anybody to do anything I've never done or not willing to do. I've got in the, down in the middle of a fish cleaning lift station to take the pump out in Beulah, and I didn't have to do that, but, yeah, you know what? That earns you a lot of respect in the eyes of your employees. I've cleaned up messes in the bathroom down here that I could have called somebody on. I don't need to do that. I pick up sticks, I pick up trash, and if somebody sees you doing that, they're more likely to, to do that. And it's, it's leadership by example, and the little things you do mean a lot to employees, so.
Okay, thank you.
I'm going to change my questioning a little bit and just follow up on something that you said. So you're internal, you mentioned that you might have eighty-five percent support, maybe not fifteen, you have four externals that are more than likely coming in, and they'll have probably a hundred percent, maybe not as supportive, at least people willing to give them a chance. How do you handle that fifteen percent that, that, you know, maybe aren't on board, and how do you get them on board?
Well, I think you got to kind of figure out why they're not on board with you. Are they loyal to somebody else? Are they unhappy with something that happened to them? It's a tough thing to figure out, and, and I'm just throwing eighty-five percent out there without actually, you know, kind of calling people out on it, I don't know, but I think if you're just, you try to be open and honest with everybody that's out there, you're eventually going to win them over, and as long as they're willing to give you a chance and prove yourself, I think the possibility always is there that you can win over their support. I don't think I've ever done anything in the past to an individual that would, that would just alienate them from me. It's probably something that either they were loyal to another individual, or they just have other thoughts. I honestly don't think I've ever done anything to anybody that would just alienate them against me, I think it's just some, maybe a preconceived notion or something.
Okay. So I'll go on the next round here. Formally, I want to thank you for taking on the interim role. It's been six months or so, and I think you know that we appreciate what you've done today, I just want to thank you. Tell us how that's gone, and maybe just some lessons learned in, you know, just over the last six, seven months.
No, I guess a lesson learned is, you know, the first time I applied for this position, you know, I was a little uncertain. You know, I've done media interviews, I've done grand openings, I've, I've done a lot of things. Am I a polished public speaker? No. Does that maybe, am I a little apprehensive about that? Yeah. Do I get through it? Yeah. That was probably some of my biggest, I mean, I love dealing with the employees, I've got the right personality to deal with the public, but some of those things kind of give me that apprehension of, you know, public speaking, working in small groups, whatever, and I think over this first six months, it, it kind of showed me that it's not that big a deal, you know? I, I've done it for twenty years. You might be a little uneasy about it, but it's really, it's nothing that you can't do. And I, I think that's the biggest thing is, where I may have been a little apprehensive at first two or three years ago, now it's like, bring it on, you know? I'm the one that has the experience, I'm the one that has the background, I'm the one that has the personality, I'm the one that can do this job, and that's what the last six months has done for me. I think we've had a great run in six months. If you talk with staff, I think everybody's a little more at ease, I think everybody's a little more talkative, and I think some things are going well. And I would just like, love the opportunity to continue doing it. We got a lot of big projects, we've got, I mean, in the next six months, we got a lot of decisions to make on the sports complex. We got Block Nine that's going to be opening up this November, we've got three, three community park master plans that we have to work on. I mean, that's, that's a big deal up at Yonker Farm, that's, that's rehabbing that park. We've got Linwood that's been neglected for the last five years, and we need to figure out what's going on with that. You know, with the early snow we have, I don't want to say we're going to have a flood, but there's probably a pretty good chance we're going to have some high water. I've got that experience in twenty years, along with the operation staff, we got a good working relationship. There's just a lot of things going on right now, and I think the Park District needs somebody that has stabilized the system and will continue to stabilize the system, so that's what I've learned in six months.
Thank you.
As an executive director, you will be both a leader and a manager. How do you see these roles intersect?
Well, as a leader, I think my personality, I consider myself a leader by example, as I mentioned earlier. I think the small things I do, people see and respect and then emulate. As a manager, I think I have that, I have a calm personality, a calm demeanor, I don't blow up if things don't go my way, and I think that's a very calming effect in dealing with personnel. You can't show your emotions, you can't show your emotions with the public, you can't show your emotions with employees, because they're going to read into that, and if they know you can't control yourself, that's, that's not good for anybody. So, yeah, I think I'm, you know, you know, they say steady Eddie or, or whatever, but yeah, I'm very calm under, under stressful conditions, so I think that lends itself to the manager side, and, and leading by example, you lead by having a calm demeanor, and that rubs off on people.
So from a management perspective, management style, you know, we've got a lot of our senior leaders have been here many years, and, you know, if we were to promote you from within, we're continuing that, everybody's been here forever, so how do you, you know, break out of that mold? Are there things that you're going to instill, that you're going to change once you're given the helm, or you talk about steady and stay in the course and smooth? What are we going to see in, out of your management style?
Well, I'll go back to my interview the last time around, and I still, one of the commissioners had asked me, "So what's the first thing you're going to do, you know, if you were to receive this position?" And I said, "There's nothing we need to do right now." I said, "The Fargo Park District has been stable for the last twenty, thirty years." I said, "Things are going well. Can some things be tweaked?" "Yeah." "And are there some things that maybe I didn't agree with, with past administration?" "Yeah." And Roger and I used to kid about that stuff, but, but the Park District as a whole was in a very good place, and things didn't need to be changed wholesale. I think things could be tweaked. Right now, I think we've got a very established group of directors, and that's a good thing. I mean, you've got people that have been here, I'm one of the young ones, you know, and I've been here twenty-one years. Thank goodness for Tyson, now I got seniority on him, but experience is a good thing, and I think we've got a good group of directors that work very well together right now, and I think you take their input, you give, you give them each a chance to be heard, to be part of the decision-making process, along with the commissioners, and, and that's the leadership group you need. Now, the executive director, if for some reason, you know, it's a fifty-fifty split, or not quite sure what, what's going on, then that executive director has to, has to take his experience and make the decision based on his experience and the best advice he has, and that's where being the leader is, is you make that final decision. So I think we take, we take the, the leadership and the vision from the board and then apply that. I mean, we're the professionals, we're the ones that, that typically know what works and what doesn't work, and I think if you guys give us the opportunity, you're going to be very happy with the results.
So I just want to press this a little bit on that. So is it an easy thought process to stay the course with the interim candidate, because we know what we got, and there'd be nervousness about bringing somebody from the outside in, because they may want to take this in a different direction? And so how do you, I guess, I'm making a statement, and I don't really have the right question to ask, but, you know, I, I just wonder how much of that support for Dave Leaker is because of that, as opposed to is Dave Leaker the best candidate? In other words, one of the externals could be really a good fit, but we're, we don't dare go there, because it's too risky, I think is.
Fear of the unknown.
Fear of the unknown.
Well, and that's a choice that US commissioners have to take, and you've got to weigh, you've got to weigh the consequences. I'm not saying there's not a good candidate out there. What I'm saying is, you've got a proven candidate right here, you've got a candidate that has twenty years of experience, has experience in the Fargo Park District, has the respect and trust of the staff, and I, if you think it's a safe bet, it is a safe bet. It doesn't mean it's a bad bet, it means that Dave Leaker is going to take the Park District, or the Park District needs to go and do the things that we need. It means that Dave Leaker is gonna take the Park District, or the Park District needs to go and do the things that we need to do. Is there a chance of the possibility that there's another candidate out there that might be better than Dave Leaker? Of course there is. But it comes down to who has the experience, who has done this job. There's only one person that's done the job for six months, and that's myself. And I think if you do your background checks, your, your, um, reference checks, you talk to local officials from other municipalities, you talk to user groups, you talk to the staff, I think you're gonna get a good perspective of who Dave Leaker is. And, and can you always take a chance on someone else? Of course you can, but I think you've got a great candidate right here.
All right, I'll take it one step further than what Jerry's asking, I think, to try to help hone in a little more. So, in physical education, you have the teacher in school or whatever, we have a term that's called busy happy good. Meaning, kids are having fun, just busy happy good going on in the gym. But, we're not visionary, we're not moving, you know, we're not, we're not trying to take ourselves from one spot to another, you know, so to speak. So, you've been the deputy director, not the director, um, before the, the past six months. And obviously, it's, it's interim, so to a certain extent, maybe we haven't been visionary, so to speak. What, what are, what, what visionary ideas do you have for taking us into the future that we maybe haven't seen or heard as of yet? Not, I mean, for the Park District period, the end of this, so.
Yeah, I, I mean, I'm not gonna sit here and tell you I'm this visionary leader. I'm gonna tell you that I'm a, I'm a solid leader with the utmost integrity and sincerity. The vision is gonna come from the commissioners, the vision's gonna come from the executive director, and the vision's gonna come from the other directors. I mean, everybody has networks that they find out what is, what is happening in parks and recreation around the nation, and what's tops on the list. Um, I'm not gonna tell you that I'm, I'm the world's greatest executive director, and I'm gonna set the vision that's gonna lead us into this utopia. That's all of our jobs. But I'm, what I'm gonna tell you is, I'm gonna get the most out of the staff, the staff are gonna trust and respect me, and that means a heck of a lot. Um, I think we've gone backwards the past couple of years, and I think we need to start moving forward. I mean, we're gonna be, we're gonna be a, uh, a facility trendsetter if we, if we get the shovel in the ground for this new sports complex. Block Nine is gonna be the jewel of, of the Upper Midwest here. I mean, yeah, they've got other, uh, plazas within West Fargo. Fargo, this is gonna be a gem down here, it's gonna be, uh, it's gonna be top-notch. I mean, we got things going on in Fargo, we've set the standard for creating neighborhood parks in, um, in neighborhood communities. I mean, we've been able to do that, we've been able to hold our assessments down. Um, yeah, I'm, I mean, no, I know everybody's looking for this visionary executive leader, but I'm telling you that it's set by all of us. You know, and I don't know if that's what you want to hear or not, but we can do great things, but it's, it's not one person. It's one person that gets everybody pulling in the same direction is what it is, so.
Um, I wanna start with.
Oh, I thought you were gonna add on to that.
Because I've thought this for a long time, and I've told other staff, and I don't know if I've actually told you directly, but I do thank you for what you've done over not just the last six months, but of course, several years of keeping us on track and be willing to step up and even just getting through this awkward process.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that.
Of being a candidate, and, um, it doesn't go unnoticed, the time and energy and just continuing and just working it every day, it's appreciated.
Thank you.
Um, I've asked everyone this question, and I'm probably the only one here who likes this question, because it's kind of an awkward question, but, um, rank the importance of the following groups and why they rank in order they do. Staff, community, user groups, and commissioners.
All right, um, got a terrible memory, so staff, community.
Staff, community, user groups, and commissioners.
So, where that ranks in my eyes, or where that ranks in the whole scheme of the Park District? Say however you want to do it. Uh, well, first of all, I would say probably, um, it's, it's gonna, I would rank staff number one. Um, just because you're not gonna have a successful park district without a very successful staff. And you're not gonna have a very successful staff unless you have, unless you have a great work environment, and you provide them, uh, what they need, uh, for their everyday essential, I mean, um, we've gotta, we've gotta, uh, make sure they're, they're compensated fairly, their benefits are good, they, their supervisors are communicating with them. Um, you know, it's been said that, that people don't leave their, uh, job, they leave their supervisor, just 'cause things aren't working out. So, I think, and the number one thing is having staff that can provide, uh, great experience for the community. Um, if you have that, you're gonna get good feedback as commissioners from the community, and, you know, things are gonna go well. If staff aren't providing for the community, then we're gonna get, uh, you know, negative comments, and that's gonna reflect directly to the commissioners. I would say, um, so almost I would say staff, community, commissioners, and user groups. I think, uh, as I mentioned before, the staff are gonna provide great facilities and programs for the community. If the community are happen, happy with the Park District, um, you know their comments are gonna reflect that. Their comments are gonna probably go directly to the commissioners, uh, which why, why rank them number three? And if their comments are positive to the commissioners, that's gonna reflect positively on the staff, and, uh, we've got a full circle there. I think the user groups, they're the ones that, um, we are providing good facilities and programs for. And while I have them on the bottom, doesn't mean they're any, any least important in my priority system, but I think that, uh, the other three can be interwoven, I guess they all kind of interwoven into things that, um, one directly affects the outcome of the other one. So, you have a, you have a good working environment, keeps your staff happy, keeps the community happy, community has positive reinforcement onto the commissioners, the commissioners in turn, uh, same with the user group, community and user group, I guess, could be the same thing. Um, they have positive influence on, on the commissioners, and that in turn reflects back to the staff, and you have your, uh, cycle there, so. Something along those lines. Yeah, no, I mean, good thing you didn't put five in there, I really would've been flustered.
Well, there actually are five on the list, we, we have a lot of graphs.
You could interchangeably put community and user groups together, but anyway, well, we won't digress.
And I'll go right into my next question that I standardly ask. Um, so what, um, obviously, as the executive director, you feel about as Dave Leaker, and you'd always, obviously, be the executive director at the same time, you know, find yourself a different that's gatherings, um, public, some related to parks, some not. How do you, how do you foresee yourself, how do you work a room? Who do you focus on, who do you not focus on, who are you gonna pay attention to? Who gets, who gets Dave Leaker's ear, and how does he treat you, and who do you approach him or do you handle him?
Well, I don't think I've ever been one to try to pick out the highest-profile personality in a room and, and try to cater to them. Um, I tr, you know, everybody puts their pants on one leg at a time, so they're, everybody's the same to me, whether you're, um, Dr. Gandhi, or Bruce Grubb, or, you know, and, and engineer over at the city. I think, uh, it kind of all depends on, you know, where you are at the time in the room. Um, some people see you and they come up and talk to you. Sometimes you wanna approach people because you've got a specific question to ask them. Um, like I said, I don't think there's any hierarchy, hierarchy that I'm gonna shun somebody to go be with the A-list. Uh, I'm not, I'm not that type of person, I'm just a regular guy. Um, I'm not polished, I don't, I don't really even want to be considered in that class, so. To put this suit on today, it's only the second time it's been worn in three years. So, thank you.
All right. How would you respond to commissioners who are making promises with end users without staff knowledge, or commissioners who are directing subordinate staff without your knowledge?
How would I deal with it? Well, I think that's, you know, if I was to be selected to this position, that's, that's my job, is to confront that head-on and, and just say, "You've hired me to be, uh, the lead person for the staff." And in all due respect, I think the commissioner should be working through the executive director. Now, there's gonna be times when, and even in Roger's cases, that some directors have more insight onto a situation than the executive director does, but alls I ask is that if you're gonna talk to one of those directors, then just let me know, or one of those directors lets me know that they, they've talked to one of the commissioners. But, uh, I think all the directors have the ability, uh, to work with commissioners. I've done it the twenty years I've been here, never had any issues. Um, now, if you start going down to, you know, maybe, um, levels below that, I think you'd take probably a direct, you know, just a direct discussion that says, "That's not appropriate." I think the commissioners set policy, um, they interact with the executive director, and as I said, sometimes with the directors, but I just don't think it's appropriate that they go to that level. I mean, I feel if, if you want to go and have small talk with staff, that's awesome, they want to see ya. But as we've all seen in the past, I mean, our staff holds commissioners in a very high regard. And if you make a request, they're gonna drop everything to satisfy those requests. Um, I think if you can get to the point where, you know, you have that relationship where you just want to come and chit-chat and say hi and small talk, that's awesome. Uh, but if you got issues, I think you need to keep it at the director's level and above. I mean, that's what this position gets paid for.
Sure. How about the port, part of making promises to user groups?
Well, I, I think, um, I don't know if any commissioner has intentionally made promises to user groups. I think they might be, um, miscommunicated that, um, a commissioner said, "That's a great idea," and they think that's a yes vote. Um, but that's just being clear with them that says, "Yeah, I think it's a great idea," but that, that doesn't mean anything about how, why would vote on emotion or anything like that. Um, I, I, it's all about communication. I think we've got ourselves a little backwards sometimes, uh, regarding that, because they do, they do take, you know, chit-chat with a commissioner, and, "Yeah, that's a great idea," is taking that as a yes vote. And, and I think we just need to do a better job of communicating with them and, and, and making sure, and if they got a great idea, say, "You know what, I'll take it back to the commissioners, I'll take it back to the staff." We'll let the staff work through it, we'll bring it through the process at the staff level, the directors level, the facilities committee, and the board. And that's the process we need to kind of get back to. I mean, I, you know, Joe, you've been around here the longest, and, and we had a really good process over the last ten, fifteen years, and things worked well. And I think we need to get back to that.
So I'm gonna ask another question similar to the previous one, but from a leadership perspective, what's the most difficult professional decision you've made, and, and what was the outcome?
Oh, I was, I mean, any professional decision's gonna be related to staff. I mean, that, those are just the most difficult, because you're dealing with somebody's life, or life and livelihood, and, and ultimately, it comes down to, you know, what's best for the majority of the staff, and what's better for, what's best for the Park District. And then you just gotta take it head-on. Um, and that's the way you gotta deal with it.
Well, we have a large, diverse park system, as you know, with many community partners. How would you approach managing the disparate interests of stakeholders? Would you be more with staff, community, but be voluntary with the staff? So, you know, us to us, or, I don't know, we're all, we're all, whatever. And we're all, uh, going in a hundred different directions, and then you've got user groups all lying on us to go in their, in their direction. How do you?
Makes sense of it all.
How do you pull it all together? How do you, like, rein this in? And not, not just to us, but like, everybody, I mean, this is a big system.
Yep.
It isn't just mowing the grass and making sure it's all right spots. It's, you know, making sure that warming hoses are open, and they're, and these should be open, and keeping the trails clear, so birders can be on the cross-country ski trails, and, you know, pools have very chemicals, and it's huge, and everybody has little things. How do you manage to bring all that together?
Well, I think staff-wise, you gotta trust your team below you, the directors below you, to manage their areas, and then turn, and then their areas, they have their department heads that manage, and it, and it's, it's kind of a whole symphony that everybody's gotta be working to the same goal, and then you bring things up, and as the decisions get to a higher proc, or a higher level, um, it's a, it's, it's, I guess it's a broader decision. Um, I guess if you're talking maybe about commissioners and having different, um, you know, areas that they like to focus on, I think that starts with, you know, as new commissioners come on, is board orientation. I mean, everybody can come here, whether it's birding, or, or basketball, or hockey, or lacrosse, or whatever, but I think if, if you're willing to take on a role as a commissioner, you have to have the ability to see the big picture, and what's, what's the overall goal for the Park District? I mean, we want to accommodate all the different user groups out there, and I think we've done a very good job of that. Um, I, you can see in, uh, you know, kind of the issue we had with the birders and the cross-country skiers last year. And I think you trust the director in that department to use his best judgment, along with input from the executive director and the other directors, and come up with a solution. And I think we came up with a great solution on that. We came up with, um, you know, uh, same, um, classic cross-country trails for the skiers, and we came up with a multi-use trail for bikers, birders, snowshoes, uh, skaters, and, uh, you, but you bring the right people in and come up with the right answers. So, uh, I think we've done a very good job. I think, uh, we've got a good directors group right now. I think we need to strengthen our managers' level right now, so we're not missing some things that are getting done. Uh, and then, of course, we just need more years of service. We've got a very young crew, especially in our operations department. Our recreation department's doing awesome, I mean, if you look in there, they're averaging, they're, they're my age. Uh, they got great experience. You look in our business office, they've got good experience in the business office. The finance director's very young, he's doing a great job. Um, you know, Enterprise, Carolyn's got a very good, uh, you know, staff in those areas. The, the pros are very experienced, um, her concessions and Quartz Plus are in good hands. I mean, I mean, it's just getting the right people in the right places and having a director team that works well together.
So you've mentioned your expertise is more on the operations side, a- and that's invaluable experience to have. In this position, it's gonna be more strategic planning, visioning, maybe things that you're not as comfortable doing, but you probably can do? How, just kind of lay it out, I mean, how does the strategic planning go? How do you balance, you know, operations side, maybe leading that to the operations, and you more focusing on the bigger picture?
Yeah, no, and I do leave operations, operations, I mean, I'm there if they need help or they need ideas. I think Dave Beetz has done an excellent job. Uh, I think the only issue there is when he moved up, and, um, the person that filled his shoes had a lot of experience, um, and then ended up taking a job in another, at another park district, and that just left a hole, you know? So we're kind of struggling there, and, and Dave's got a handle on that. But, uh, in regard to strategic planning, you know, we've had that brought up in some of the conversations today with the different, uh, employee groups, and, and feel we need a strategic plan. Um, and, and I'll admit, I'm not an expert in strategic planning, but I think there's, um, people within the North Dakota Parks and Recreation System that have done this. I know, uh, Randy Bina is a great resource out in Bismarck, they've done a strategic plan for probably the last ten years. And I know, uh, Dana Shar with NDRPA has probably led their strategic planning, um, process. So, uh, I mean, there's a couple- So, I mean, there's a couple of people right there that you can, you can lean on to get some input. I think we need to probably take it to the director's level and make sure this is, this is where we want to go, and what does that look like? So I think you, you need to get buy-off from your executive team on whatever direction we want to go as a park district. And I think if that's the direction we want to go, we can go out and, and get the additional help we need to set that up.
Do you feel it's a real shortcoming? You know, I think it's easy to say, and we've spent some money with an agency on, you know, some planning, some of that stuff a few years ago. Or, or do you think, and it's okay to say, that we're in good shape, we just need to tweak it a little bit and move it forward?
Me personally, and I don't want to go back to, you know, kind of Jerry's comment was, you know, this is what we've always done, it's comfortable, whatever, but I think we had a great system set up with our long-range capital plans. I think that was more probably of capital planning strategic process, and I think that's done a great job for setting up facilities within Fargo. You know, I would just have to look into the whole strategic planning process and, and maybe get a little convincing of what that's going to do for us. I don't know if that's something that I would just set out and say, we're going to, we're going to go out and develop a strategic plan. We can definitely look into it. I know Bismarck really believes in it. Grand Forks doesn't have a strategic plan like that, but, so it would just take, asking the right questions and, and getting the right feedback and finding out where we want to go. I think we've done a great job with that one so far. That's my personal thoughts. Not that it's not a valuable resource, I just have to be convinced.
I want to just jump in on one more leadership question before we move on to the next bucket. So if you got this position, we have an executive director position, what, what are you going to do?
I'm going to be a deputy.
Or the deputy.
Oh, sounds like, well, hopefully we'd keep the executive director Spotify, work this hard.
My brain knew what it was thinking, but my mouth didn't get it out.
Thanks, Vicki.
You stole a future question of mine.
Oh, did I?
I have a question up here, too. That's good.
Well, my personal thoughts are, and I, you know, have some conversation with some of the other directors, and they're concerned about giving up positions because they feel we're already short-staffed, but myself personally feels a, I don't believe we need a deputy director. I would rather elevate the other directors to a level that takes on those responsibilities. I just feel if you have an executive director and a deputy director, the deputy director is doing all the work, and the executive director is, is going out and meeting and greeting and politicking, because I, I still feel the executive director and myself can do both, but you just, you allow some of the other directors to take on more responsibility and, and make them true directors. I think we could, you could take that salary and strengthen your manager level while also bringing their compensation up a little bit to compensate for their additional responsibilities. I think it would be a win for everybody. I, I just, I've never liked the director, assistant director. And if you look around the state, Bismarck had a director and assistant director, and, since Randy Bina took over the executive director, they've since gone to three directors. I always kiddingly say Grand Forks had it right 25, 30 years ago, where they had a director and three superintendents, and then they went away from that. Why?
Before, before you, I don't even know whose turn, I think we're still on you. And I'm going to piggyback off of Jerry with the same question. So you've said that you'd eliminate the deputy director, I mean, that'd be your choice, that you don't think it's necessary. Would you do anything different with the directors you have? Would you rearrange their responsibilities? Do you think they're all good where they are?
Well, ideally, and, you know, this comes back to working with the directors group. We started on this about tweaking the organizational chart. Myself personally, I'd like to try to get all the directors as level as possible, so that you don't have one director that's elevated above the other one. I think in my 20 years here, that was the case for most of those 18 years where a director was elevated, or two were elevated above everybody else, and it created some hard feelings. I'd like to spread out the responsibilities so they're all as equal, you're not going to get them all as equal as possible. I mean, if you look at operations, there's 50 employees in that department, but I think you can, you can spread the responsibilities. I, I go back and forth on Block Nine and where that should fit. I know where I'd like to see it fit, but you have to have people that are willing to take on those responsibilities. What I would like to see is you take that deputy director's expense and, and you, and you increase the responsibilities of the other directors, and then maybe some of our shortcomings in operations is we create a, right now, we've got a park foreman that takes care of all of our exterior parks and some of our interior buildings. We have a facilities manager in programming that takes care of some of our skating facilities, but what I'd like to see is you have basically a, a park foreman and then a, a facilities manager that takes, one person takes care of the indoor facilities, one takes care of the outdoor facilities. And I think that would help relieve some pressure in operations. And by eliminating the deputy director's position, you could help strengthen that manager level and also strengthen the director level. And I think it would be a win across the board.
And, and you feel there's enough time in the day of an executive director to take on the nuanced duties of lunching with the mayor and going to different meetings and, and meeting with city officials in other park districts, and keeping an eye on our sphere overall? Do you think that it's a, you have, you need enough time in the day of the executive director and the elevating of the directors from where they are now to taking on more of those duties?
Of course.
We're in a place, our, our system is going to have that.
Yep, yep, 100%. I think, I just, you know, it's not like I wasn't going to apply for the deputy director's job when it opened up. I mean, it's, it's a step up, and, and if I'm not willing to step into that role and help the park district be the best place it can be, so that's why I took that job. Do I think it was needed? No, but I took it. Now, if I have some influence to, to decide that position moving on in the future, my recommendation, and I think I'd have to review it with the other directors. As I said, there are some concerns, I don't want to give up any staff, but I think we could find a way to manage that with our current directors and then strengthen the manager level. The directors shouldn't be doing the day-to-day stuff. They should be, they should be bouncing around and, and helping all the other department heads underneath them accomplish their goals. Right now, I think if you would talk to operations director, he's not doing an operations director's job right now. He's doing some day-to-day stuff that needs to be pushed down to the foreman level and the other levels. And, and right now, we're a little broken in that area. We don't have enough scars on some of the supervisors there. We just don't have enough on-the-job training for them, and we need to work through that.
So just to follow up to that before I get into mine, so, I mean, that's your view, and then you're saying you're going to go to directors and run it by them. What if six directors think we need one, but still Dave Leaker as executive director still thinks that's not the way to go? I mean, can you make that hard decision and just say, you know, this is where I think we need to go? Or is that always deferring to directors to make?
No, I think, I think, I think you've got to let everybody get their opinion out there, and if it's something that, that I have as strong as feelings as I have on this, I would, I would think I would have the ability to convince them this is the way to go, and I don't think it would be a 6-0 vote against me, but, yeah, I mean, I just.
And I just prefer anything. There might be something else that comes up, too. I mean, you know we need to do it, but maybe it's not a.
I mean, if it's something that I'm 100% absolutely sure this is the way to go, then I'd make that decision. If it's something that we just need to have, I don't know, a majority or something, I guess we would figure that out, and I would, I would go with the consensus of the directors group. I mean, more heads are better than one, and if I'm not 100% sure on it, then I'm not going to go that way.
Okay. So next category, change leadership, problem solving. You and I have talked a little bit, and I think you've mentioned it today, just the vast experience that we have with directors. And that's great, but on the other side, too, sometimes that can be one where people dig their heels in and say, well, we've done that before, that's not going to work. I mean, I can't imagine I'd be playing pickleball. And esports are real popular, but I mean, things change. I'm just wondering, how willing are you to listen to ideas, suggestions, changes, and maybe give some examples of how you implemented some of those?
Well, yeah, I think you've got to, you've got to evaluate trends that are coming, and are they long-term trends, are they short-term trends? Can you get on them, can you get on board right away and, and take advantage of them? I remember dog parks. We never had any dog parks, and Commissioner Johnson came back from Arizona one year and said, we've got to try a dog park. And we're like, you know, what's, what's going on here? You know, we tried it, and for the cost of building a dog park, it was the greatest thing we ever did. The only problem with the dog park is trying to find out where to put it. We could, we could have 10 dog parks in Fargo, but if we don't have 10 locations, you can put dog parks in. So, yeah, no, I'm, I'm always open to, to new ideas, and, and if, myself, as I said, I'm not a dictator. I mean, if the other, other directors or other staff feel this is, this is the way we need to go, yeah, we'll definitely look at that. Or a commissioner comes up with an idea, as, as was the case with the dog parks. And we're always open to ideas. We don't want to, we want to be leading the pack, we don't want to be following. And I think, you know, we're doing a little following right now, and we need to get out, back out in front. I mean, we've led the way on developing parks throughout North Dakota. We need to get back on track for developing facilities throughout North Dakota.
Thank you.
So just to stay on that track, in the next two years, with everything that is evolving, and you're thinking about what you're going to do, what do you see coming to Fargo? And, you know, you visit other park districts or go to conventions, what do you see that we don't have that we should be having, and how's that going to be next?
Well, I think, I think the biggest thing is what we need to do, and I saw, you know, I saw this at a conference a couple of years ago, and, and I don't know if it's the right terminology, I call it, I call it soccer five, which I think it's kind of five-on-five small-court soccer, where a lot of metropolitan agencies have been turning tennis courts into little soccer pitches, where you put field turf on them, you put a goal in there, and you play anywhere from three-on-three to five-on-five soccer. And, you know, some of our smaller parks that just get the turf absolutely destroyed, you have these as artificial turf, and they can play on them 24/7. They're lit, they've already have lights for tennis courts. I'm not saying we turn all of our existing tennis courts into soccer five pitches, but I think there is a big need in the Jefferson neighborhood, and maybe some other neighborhoods in town where you could build some of these smaller facilities, and, and they could use the heck out of them, and, and the players get a lot more touches. It's like playing, you know, you start with termites in hockey, you play three rinks cross-court, so the kids get more touches. Mites, you, you dive a rink into, into two sheets, the kids get more touches. Then finally, you get a score, you can play full ice. But you get these smaller fields and, and a greater number of these fields, and the kids get more touches and more opportunity to play. And I think that's one thing that we need to look at. That, kind of in a similar vein as the dog parks, is we've got to try to find the right location for that. There's not a lot of property in, in the middle of Fargo. I've been dealing with one gentleman over in that Jefferson neighborhood that is looking at somehow redeveloping that trailer court along 25th Street, and if you could get a couple, a spot for two tennis courts in there, and you could put a couple of soccer fields in there, it'd be awesome. Yeah, the kids use the heck out of Jefferson, Jefferson Park, so much so that it's, you know, the, the gold creases are dirt. So, I think that's.
Is it, that's similar to what Target's doing in inner cities, correct? Where they devoted a lot of money to converting tennis courts to soccer fields?
Yeah, 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 I, I think I saw it, it was, started down in Florida or some, or kind of I first saw it. Maybe that was just a group that presented at a national conference or something, but I think, you know, it, I think that along with, pickleball's a trend for, everybody likes playing, that's just not for seniors, it's for everybody. I mean, look at this guy over here, I mean, he's my age, and we still haven't got together and played a pickleball match, but pickleball's awesome.
I do have my art card, though, so, man, it is.
That's right. How about a cat park?
That's already been brought up at a commission meeting, so.
Actually, a side story, I mean, there is in Peru or some South American county, they have a cat park there. But, you know.
I was going to say, is it totally closed?
Do you don't take the cat home with you, or you leave it there? No, the park, the cats live in the park.
Can you interact with them?
It's their seat. They're, they're like, they're not, you know, cloying cats, they're furrying cats, or sit down on the bench, it's just part of like.
I was going to say, I mean, I'm, I have cats, and I just, cats have weird personalities, and they can throw the claws out at any time.
Right, but it just was, I thought that was because I never had a cat park.
No, but when we were going to create a dog park down at Island Park, there was a question from the audience about why haven't we developed a cat park?
You know, in the dog parks, I had a coworker who had his single, not married, single daughter and had a dog, and that's how he made fun of us. And in a good way, socializing the dog and meeting people who have similar likes and dislikes, and, I mean, it was a social opportunity for people who don't have kids to take to baseball and, you know, to actually consume our community, so it's free for access, it's available to everyone. I said it's very good.
I'm going to actually pass, I've asked a couple of extra questions along the way, I've not seen anything here that.
All right, Dennis, what would your top three priorities be during your first month, six-month, first year? What, what, what's going to, what's going to get done when that interim tag gets ripped off?
Well, I'll tell you right now, what is coming down the pike is, you know, we've, we've just approved McGough as our CMAR, so I think we need to get together and, and kind of decide where we're going to go with this sports complex. I mean, if we want to get a start possibly this fall yet with a dirt project, or spring of 2021, I think some more dominos need to fall in the fundraising effort on that, but I think we just need to get everybody comfortable with what the project is. You know, the, the NCAA soccer field, the elevated walking track, the four basketball courts, the ice rink, relocate the depot offices, I think, you know, we need to get together and come to consensus on that. We've got Block Nine coming up, it's going to be a big project this summer. We want to get that open and, and kick off and, and running, you know, at the Holiday Lights Parade the Tuesday before Thanksgiving, so that's going to be a big project, getting the Block Nine manager on board. We've got three master plans that we've got to start addressing. I mean, the Yonker Farm master plan up there with the conservation park is going to be a game changer for North Fargo. You know, we always hear about them, nobody does anything in North Fargo anymore, it doesn't be a game changer up there. It could extend the life of the Yonker Farm's children's museum slash morph into a science museum. You've got North Dakota Gaming Fish, you've got Audubon, Dakota, the Sand Hill Archers, North Dakota Gaming Fish, Riverkeeper. I mean, it could be the, it could be the coolest site for a learning center for kids and everything in North Fargo. And I think we've got partners that have the financial ability to get this done with very little input from the Fargo Park District, besides maybe offering maintenance services, whether it be in the summer or winter. I mean, Marshall Johnson, everybody knows Marshall's bigger than life. That guy can raise some funds. I know the, the Agassi of the Sand Hills Archers, you know, they have, they have some funding abilities there. I think they're just a great partnership opportunity for that. Linnawood Park, we haven't done anything with Linnawood Park for the last three, four years, with softball moving out of that. We've got to figure out what to do with that. That used to be a Gem of Fargo, we need to turn it back into a Gem of Fargo. You know, and the Island Park Pool, same thing there, it's, it's kind of hanging on by the thinnest of threads, and we need to figure out what we're going to do with that. So, I mean, all those three master plans are huge, and Block Nine's huge, and the sports complex is huge. We, we need to think about all those things. We need to get the salary survey wrapped up, we need to make the Fargo Park District a place that everybody loves coming to work every day, and part of that is compensation, part of that is benefits. I know Rusty talked about looking at the benefit packages. Maybe we get a, give a small group together and we look at that. I mean, how can we drive more people to the Fargo Park District? As I mentioned. As I mentioned before, the county's coming up with different ideas of trying to retain their employees. I think, I think you've got to, the Fargo Park District is the largest park district in the upper Midwest, you know, they always said between Minneapolis and Seattle. Uh, we should be a leader in that too, uh, not just the visionary leader, we should be a leader in where people want to work. So, uh, we've got to look at that. Uh, and then, you know, as part of that whole thing, we got the budget getting ready to come up again. I think we did a great job last year with, with securing five full-time positions that's gonna help make everybody's life easier and make the park district more productive. To be perfectly honest, I think you're gonna look at those same type of requests this year, just to get us where we need to be. So, uh, there's a lot of things we gotta look at. We gotta, we gotta get, get the, you know, I'm not a big culture warrior fan, but the culture's gotta get back to where it needs to be. Morals, I think morale's picked up in the last six months. I think there's still ways to go, so there's a lot of things we need to do.
Well, that was your first month, what about the rest of the year? I wrote it all down a week or so, I got it.
You write fast then.
Here's a recording, that's right, we got it. Boy, that's a lot, we're gonna have to get you a cut. Change leadership, problem solving is our topic. So, you've touched on this a little bit with the staff, you know, that last 15%, and there's always that last piece. And I think of the community and, you know, we have people who are fans of getting information of what does the community want and we have others who say, oh, well, if you ask, ask for, ask them, they're gonna want, you know, the moon. And you're gonna have the people who we already have coming to us in various ways, asking for things and demanding things, and then we have people we never hear from. So how do you, as the executive director, what's your, what would your plan be or your idea be and what would you do as far as finding out some of these things that are coming up especially? How do you find out what the community wants as a whole, individuals? How do you, how would you gather, figure that out?
Well, I mean-
And then end in success at the end where people are-
Yeah, I mean, I, I think we've done it a couple of times and we've worked through, uh, green play out of Colorado. I mean, if you're looking at a park district as a whole and, and what do people want to see from the park district, I think you're gonna, that's a big picture and you're gonna have to go to a firm that has the ability to survey the community as a whole, and we've done that twice. It proves the fact that people want trails, uh, in that initial, uh, study we did with Moorhead and West Fargo. And then in the most recent one, it, they want indoor turf. So I think if, if you're looking at a big picture type thing, you're gonna have to have a big picture type, uh, survey study done with that. If you're looking on a smaller scale, say, uh, a Linenwood master plan or an Island Park master plan or a Yonker Farm master plan, I think you rely on staff to put some basic parameters together, basic amenities together. Present that at a neighborhood meeting, you present it, uh, to the media, you present it as a community survey and you say, "Here's what we feel the basics are, this is what we see as staff meeting." We're, we're open to different ideas of, of some other thoughts that are out there that maybe we're not, we're not seeing. Not necessarily you're gonna take all their ideas, some of them might be pretty wild, but there's some that might surprise you and you can incorporate them in there. So, I think we had a pretty good plan laid out for, um, the Linenwood master plan and a, and a kind of a neighborhood meeting. And then we're gonna send out a, a, a survey and try to get some input. Um, and then we just decided to put that on hold for a while, but I think we're gonna, you know, in talking with Dave and the other directors, we're gonna try to get that moving again this spring and, and get something done down at, down at Linenwood, cause it's, it's really needed down there. So, I mean, on a big scale, I think you gotta bring in a firm to help you out with that, on a smaller scale, we can handle that.
He's right back at me again. Coming back.
Must've been too boring.
Here, he got it, he got what he wanted or didn't want. All right, um, so we're moving into budget and finance and obviously we're familiar with our budget and our expenses and how we do things here. One big thing that, you know, is kind of weighing over us as with a cloud is the sports complex and the fundraising and, and I think you even alluded to this back here where, where you made the comment about, you know, we need to decide the plan for the sports complex, but of course financing is a piece of that. And, um, we seem to be in a treading point right now and I'm wondering, does the, should the executive director be part of that fundraising effort? How would you be part of it? And how do you think maybe you could help get us to that finish line? What would you, what are some of the things you'd do compared to that fundraising?
Well, um, when it comes down to fundraising, I mean, that again, um, I think you have to rely on whether it's staff, commissioners, foundation board members. Fundraising is about the people you know in the community. Once again, I, I've never considered myself connected in Fargo with, you know, probably those level of donors. Uh, but I think if you can go out and, and have commissioners and, uh, foundation board members and other community leaders, um, like, uh, like Irving, Irv, and those are the people that, that have the connections to help in the fundraising effort, uh, that's where you want to go. I'm not gonna be able to go out and knock on doors and, and get a $3 million donation for the park district, I just don't run in those circles. But I think my ability is go out and try to put a, bring a plan together of how we're gonna get to where we need to get to. And, um, I think that's one thing we wanna, you know, want to get together in the future here and, and, and kind of update the commissioners of where we are and, and what our plan is moving forward.
So I was gonna ask another question about fundraising, but without getting into details about, you know, specifics of names or companies or anything like that, have you, you've been involved with the fundraising in this project? You've been asked to come along and tell us about one of those times you went out to a lunch or something and how that experience went for you and your process of hoping?
Oh, I, um, I guess the most recent one, I've had the chance to meet with Tyler Brandt, Craig and- And just, I mean, get his thoughts and, and get, get his feelings, cause I know he was approached at the, uh, uh, meeting, the luncheon last summer and he really wanted to be a part of the sports complex. So it was basically just kind of a meet and greet, I've never met Tyler before and, and yeah, he's a great guy. And we basically, you know, Brian and Craig, um, gave the pitch and said, you know, these are our options we have and this is what we're looking for and, and, and he was very interested. Um, we don't know what type of commitment that meant, but, uh, I think it was just a good initial meeting with that, so, I don't know, I, I just think he's a real genuine guy.
So when it comes to the sports complex, what's your comfort level? I mean, we're raising, we got fundraising going on, we're not there yet, we got, you know, the, we're gonna soon be able to have a good understanding of the expense side and the revenue isn't gonna be there. Where, where's your comfort level? Where, where will you say as executive director, "We're good, we need to go"? Or are you already there maybe?
Well, I think the more and more we look at it and the more our, our public-private partnership, what we're looking at, um, to extend, you know, taxpayer funds, I, I think we're ahead of most, most other park districts that have tried something like this. I mean, I just feel if you can match public dollars with private dollars at a one-to-one ratio, that's a win for everybody. Um, and I think we're looking at trying to match it, you know, maybe one to two. And if you're, if you, if you're a local taxpayer, you gotta believe that's a heck of a deal for you. I mean, even if you don't have kids that might be participating in it, that's a heck of a deal. Um, and I think that's one thing that, that we're looking at putting a, a very clear picture together for the commissioners of how we want to get to, the ideal way to get to where we want to go and then what's our fallback. And, uh, I think we can show that even if we have a fallback plan, Plan B, it's still gonna be a heck of a deal for the, for the public. So, um, sure, we'd like a couple of big dominos to fall, yeah, that, that makes life easier on everybody. But, um, I don't think anybody's built a facility like this and looked back and said, "Jeez, we built that too big." I think time after time again, they say it's too small. I mean, look at Rusted right now, they wish they would've built their turf bigger. The dome, they wish they would've built that bigger. You look back and you look at the economic impact of, of projects like that and, and everybody said, "You never hear we built it too big."
So we have a lot of exciting new projects coming on board, potentially sports complex, Block Nine. We have to revamp existing parks, Linenwood, Island Park, both iconic, and that's only and we have ongoing maintenance, mowers, deep ball, all kinds of expenses here. What do you think is the best way to approach balancing all of that with the funds that you've got available? Do you think the taxpayer dollars should cover all of that? Should we even try to get more recovery from fees or things like that? Or how do you think all of that, like, what would be the ideal, David, or-
Well, being a public recreation entity, I mean, there's, you always have to supply a tax-based support for your facilities and programs and, I mean, that's based, that's just being based on taxes. Um, you gotta offer that up to the public. Um, I think you, everything we have in the park district is subsidized to some extent. I think what we try to do is, is limit the subsidy as low as possible. Um, I mean, if we can, most of the stuff we have is market-based, I mean, you know, golf courses, you know, I'd love, we, we'd love to charge twice as much, but are you gonna get that in the market? No. It's a balancing act. Uh, people in, in Fargo are probably a little spoiled with the facilities they have and, and the fees they pay. And that goes with everything, whether it's facilities or programs or whatever. Um, and as you said, it is a balancing act. And I think that's one thing we've done over, you know, my 20 years at the park district. And I give Jim Larson all the credit. Um, he is a very good finance guy. He, uh, he balanced, uh, maintenance with future expansion, um, kept our mills pretty steady. But we still, we still, we still built some nice proj, I mean, we built the Coliseum, we built Southwest Youth Hockey, we, um, Davie's Pool. And as, as some of our debt service comes off, we've been allowed to build these new projects and, and, and I think he's just done a good job, him and, you know, along with Roger. It's not necessarily all Jim, but it's both of them. So it is a balancing act, we can't just go put all of our, our eggs in the sports complex budget because as you said, we've got Island Park Pool, we've got Linenwood, we gotta find a balancing act between those two. And the more donations that we can raise for the sports complex, that allows more to be used on, um, you know, maintenance and deferred maintenance and improving other park district facilities. But, uh, uh, there's only so much of a, a fee you can charge without, you know, hamstring in some families and stuff, so. I mean, pools, they're always gonna, they're always gonna lose money, you're never gonna recover your money on that. Golf courses around here are probably always gonna lose money, especially with our flood scenarios. Parks, that's what people pay taxes for, so they can use them for free. We need to have a balance of free programs, low-cost programs, and then as you go up the pyramid, the, the golf lessons and stuff, you gotta pay for that, so.
Let me just follow up Stacy's question, you know, and not get too deep into the budget, but roughly right now, our budget, it's 80% public funding, 20% private funding. How do you, and maybe you think it's fine that way, but if we challenge you to decrease the burden on the public funding, in, in whether it's on the income side or, or the expense side, to give us some more money to do some of the things that we're talking about right now, what kind of a plan would you have for that? Knowing that, again, you're internal and you'll compete against four people externally that are gonna come into this and see this as a brand-new budget and more than likely pick it apart and have some ideas. Do you have any new ideas or basically just status quo for real with the budget right now?
About just increasing revenue sources?
Revenue sources, expenses, just trying to decrease that 80/20 split to, I think you went to a, a meeting at the conference and they basically flipped that upside down, went from 80/20 to 20/80 and, and we'll never get to that, but any ideas on how to decrease a bit of the dependency on the public money?
Well, I, I mean, you know, we're struggling right now maintenance-wise. Um, to decrease operational expenses, I think it's gonna be a crunch. I think we, we've tried that and I think we've taken a step backwards. That along with, you know, just losing some of our experience in park maintenance, we've lost some efficiencies that we need to regain. I think with the vast diversity of the Fargo Park District, there's a lot of acreage to cov, covering, a lot of expenses to cover. I think we do a good job with what our, you know, our, our mill levy rate is. Uh, I know we might disagree on that, 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 uh, we can cut operationally, but I think it, it puts a stress on all the employees. We appreciate the commissioners, um, I know it was a split vote to add a mill back last year, but I think that was a big relief to the staff, uh, to do that and to get the support from the, the board on that. As for increasing the revenues, um, I think just, you know, growing up in the, in the North Dakota Park District, uh, system, I mean, that's probably a pretty typical split. Uh, when I was in Beulah, it was probably more like two-thirds, one-third of donated funds and, and two-thirds of, of levy. And I just felt every year I'd write a donation letter out to the big plants out there and beg for money just to try to get us through the year. And it's not fun. One thing I learned from Roger is, is people keep coming to the park district wanting more and more and more, but they don't keep, they don't come and say, "Cut", you know? I think we try to allocate our funds as, as well as possible and give the, give the citizens of Fargo the best bang for their buck. And, um, I guess in my six months here, in my 20 years here, I, I probably count on one hand how many people come and say, "Please cut" or, um, not "cut", but complain about their mill levy. I think, you know, we basically take six, six and a half cents of every dollar as, as a tax, um, for every dollar a person pays in Fargo and that comes to the park district. And I think we do a very good job of allocating those funds and stretching them as far as possible. I, I don't have any good answers for you right now, how you would increase the revenues. I think that's something that, if that's directed by the commission, we can look at and we can ask around and see what options there are. I don't have any silver bullet right now to say, "Yeah, we can flip that to 60/40", but I just think we do, we, we gotta do the best job possible with funds we have and, and, you know, I think trying to do a, a private-public partnership on this sports facility is, would be a game changer in that area. I mean, instead of, say, a Bismarck looking out, uh, to do a bond referendum or a sales tax and have the public pay for 100% of that, we're looking at a 50/50 split, which is positive.
Into the home stretch. So we hire you, in six months, how do we know we hired the right person?
Uh, well, I just think, um- I just think you, uh- Just by interacting with staff and asking how it's going. Um, I think you, everybody has the ability to talk to the directors and as I said, i-if you can work your way into a small chit-chat conversation with other staff, by all means, do it. If you got issues and stuff, take it to the directors and above, but I think you can walk up to anybody at the Fargo Park District today or in six months and they'll give you an honest opinion. Hopefully they're honest enough to say that, and I would expect them to say that. Hopefully, they're honest enough to say that, and I would expect them to say that. I think we'll, six months will be through the budget process. We'll probably have a better understanding of what the sports complex looks like. Uh, it'll be a bright new day in Fargo because the grass will be green and everything, and hopefully, it's not going to rain this summer. And, and I think you'll just be able to tell that it was the right choice.
Thank you.
You answered them all. So, uh, park district policy requires the executive director to live in Fargo within six months of taking the job. Where do you view the role of this policy?
Well, I've thought long and hard about that one. Um, I know this was a policy that was changed at the, uh, last executive director search, for whatever reason, I do not know. I would think it's all your guys' intention to hire the best possible candidate available, the best candidate for the Fargo Park District and the citizens of Fargo. I would, I would, uh, think we could have an open and honest discussion, uh, about that policy along with, uh, whatever, um, compensation would be offered. And, um, I've been working on a house out in West Fargo for going on too long, and I've still got some work to do. And if there's a possibility to either extend that from six months to a year, I might make, I may make that request, but bottom line, if, if that's what the board decides, and that's what the board decides, then.
It's negotiable.
Oh, no, I, it, I mean, if that's what comes down to take this position, I'm not gonna let. I've got too much involved in the Fargo Park District, and I'm too loyal to the staff that if I was offered the job, I wouldn't take it. But I would maybe make a request here or there.
I'm not sure why the policy was changed. I can say personally for myself because the position is paid for by taxpayers. We really owe it to the tax base. We have more ownership and, you know, whether, I know our lines are very blurred in Fargo, Morehead, West Fargo, Delworth, the whole area, but I think that it really, um, I think it's really important. Thank you.
Yeah, I think a lot of our wrap-up questions are, if selected for this position, when would you be able to start?
Monday?
Tomorrow?
I'd have to give my previous employer two weeks.
The salary range, uh, it's 114 to 152. Uh, I don't think you have any questions about the benefits package because you've been on it for 20 years. Does that salary range work for you?
He just doesn't want to have his pay cut though.
My biggest thing is, I just, you know, as part of this salary survey, I, I think we're, we're trail- trailing some other districts, some other entities within the Fargo-Morehead area, municipal entities. And, I mean, my goal is, is to make sure we offer a fair compensation package, not only to myself, but to all the employees. Because the time it takes to train an employee and then you lose them to another district is, it just, it's crushing. It's not just crushing for the person you lose, it's crushing for everybody else that says, "Well, why, how come they can't get paid more than us?" So, I mean, that would be the big thing for me is, I, I think, and I think Rusty brought it up at the administration meeting, is, you know, we want to make it better for the employees, and I, I'm 100% behind that. And that goes along with compensation. I'm, I'm not saying we gotta compete with the private sector, but we gotta compete with the, the public sector. Because it was kiddingly said from the city of Fargo that says, "You train them and then we'll hire them next year from you." So, that's not right, and it makes, makes it tough for all of our staff, so. I would just, hopefully, guys are in support of that, and that would, that would be one of my big things, so.
So, do you have any thoughts, and we haven't been that close to the salary survey yet, but i- if we're thinking this is the range and we offer this range, then are we looking at potentially something more than that soon in the survey for this position?
Uh, for what?
For the executive director position? Or is this range what you've seen in the salary survey?
You know, I think probably right now, the range is probably right there with Bismarck and, and Grand Forks. I'd have to double-check that, Rusty. I'm not exactly sure, but I'm more worried about the other directors than I'm more wor- than worried about myself. I think in my 20 years here, you know, I tou- I touched on it a little bit, that, you know, there, there was a tiered director level. Um, and I felt maybe I was probably where I needed to be, and there were some that were above, and there was several that were below. And I think we need to make sure we make it fair and square across the board. So that's what I'm more concerned about.
It would be helpful, though, if we could see the, what the salary survey says about this position before we extend an offer. I, I'd like to know what, what.
Oh, yeah, I, well, we can give you that, we can give you that sheet. Yep, yep, yep.
Is it that far enough along? Because I know we're still working on that.
Well, we've got his first draft back, um, you know, uh, he was gone for several weeks in December. We were fini- wrapping, as I mentioned, administration meeting, we were wrapping up our year-end with evals and everything. And, and Stacy's just finally had time to get back looking into it. And just to be perfectly open and honest, I had pushed for a independent salary survey since the time Roger was here. Um, in talking with Grand Forks and Bismarck, they gave great, great recommendations to this individual. And I think where we were compared to where Grand Forks and Bismarck were, our consultant took Grand Forks and, and Bismarck leaps ahead of where they were. I think, uh, where we were and where our consultant is, I think we're, we're just gonna try to marry the two and come up with the best salary survey possible. So that's kind of what we're working on right now. We have some holes in VSS that we didn't get good response back. Um, and I think Stacy has some avenues and some information there that she's gonna help share with the consultants, so. Yeah, we're just, we're, we're trying to fill all the holes so it's as clean as possible. But, yeah, we can definitely share that. That one's a pretty easy one. Um, it's pretty comparable.
And even if it's not, the ink isn't dry, at least it would be nice to know if we're where we're at.
Right on.
Got anything? What else do you want to know about this guy? It's time. Whatever else you wanted to know, now is your chance.
My question is, gonna be the last question, it wouldn't be the last question if I asked it, so if you have a question to ask me, go ahead.
Well, I, I, I really just wonder if there's something that you wanted to share with us that you haven't had the opportunity. Okay. The opportunity.
Why am I the best candidate for the job? Is that what you're saying?
No, I'm asking if there's anything else you want to tell us about or have thoughts on that you feel would help us make our decision.
Well, and I've touched a little bit all throughout kind of the interview, and I appreciate everybody's time. I just think that, you know, I, I know there's, there's always the appeal of bringing somebody new in with different ideas and, and different thoughts. And along with that comes a ver- it, it's a high-risk, high-risk award, you know? And there's a chance you take with that. Uh, I don't think, I don't consider myself, uh, a backup pick or Plan B pick just because I've been here forever. I think Fargo Park District leads the upper Midwest in a lot of things. We take a backseat to nobody. I think, uh, just myself personally, I've got, um, I put myself in position for this, this, uh, possible position by, you know, being part of the leadership team of NDRPA, being past president, being the first person at the Fargo Park District to be certified, um, a parking rec professional. You look at all the years in Fargo, and myself and Dave Beetz are the only two that have ever been certified. I think that says a lot that, yeah, sure, you need it to help with potential, uh, future advancements, but it also says you're willing to go out and do that. As you look at my cover letter that I've shown you and my, my, uh, resume, there's knowledge of the Fargo Park District that none of these candidates have. Yeah, sure, they've got experience, they've got knowledge of their park district. They don't have knowledge of the Red River Valley, they don't have knowledge of, um, how we do things in the upper Midwest. I've worked with the city of Fargo, I've worked with the school district, I've worked with the county. Um, those are relationships that take years to develop. Can somebody come in here and develop those relationships? Sure they can. Is it gonna take them time to get up to speed? Sure it is. But I think I bring all that into one package, along with the personality that I'm not a hothead, I'm very even-keeled, I can deal with stressful situations, I can deal with angry, uh, citizens, I can deal with angry employees without blowing up. That's something I can't say about, uh, maybe some past professionals at the park district. Um, even the ones that I deep carely, or I care deeply for and, and look up to. They didn't have the calm personality, but, anyway. So I just think, uh, you know, I've been in parks and recreation my whole life. I've got the ability to do it, I've got the, you know, like I said, I'm not a passionate guy, but if passion's the word, I got the passion to do it and have the intelligence to do it. So, I listen to people, I make the best possible choices. And, uh, and I'm loyal to the staff to a hilt. I don't think, I think where we are right now, where we've gone the last six months, we're going in the right direction. And I think it's only gonna get better, so.
I do actually have one more question, and I, I should have showed it in here somewhere else, but I didn't. Obviously, you've been with a lot of these people for a very long time, and there probably many of them are close to you like family and obviously many good friends. And you've often been the one they've gone to for advice or suggestion, but also for fun and enjoyment. And, um, you've been one of the guy. And now you would be moving into someone above them. How do you view, how would anything change as far as your relationship, whether it's here, whether it's a, a group outing, whether it's an actual employee outing, whether it's off the, you know, after hours? Do you, do you foresee any of that changing, or do you think it'll just, that you can, that it would maintain the way it has been? Or do you see any of that being?
No, I don't, I don't, I don't want it to change. They know who the boss would be. I don't, I mean, I don't consider myself a boss, I consider myself a teammate. I don't want things to change. I don't want to walk into a shop and everybody get all worried why is this leaker down here? I mean, for all they know, I'm down there trying to help them out with something. Um, I've had the relationship where nobody's been intimidated by me. Does that mean they're gonna get away with anything? Absolutely not. Everybody still is accountable for what they do. And, uh, and I think that's the way it has to be, but I'm not gonna change. I'm still gonna, I mean, Roger treated everybody like it was his family. It worked well. People loved Roger. Do we have my disagreements with him? Heck, yeah. Did he tell me what he thought sometimes that I didn't? Yeah. No, it doesn't have to change. People just have to be held accountable. And I think we, there's, there's a way to balance both of those. Yeah, I'll leave it there.
So do you have any questions for us, Dave?
Uh, a couple here. So as commissioners, how do you see yourselves making this position for me successful? Or making me a successful executive director if I was offered this job?
It's a little different than how many days off do I get as compensation or other questions like that. That's, that's.
Well, it's, it's a partnership.
It's good, it's great. Saying it's more philosophical than it is.
You don't think you've been asked, I've been getting philosophical questions all day?
I'm not saying you aren't entitled to, I'm just saying that, that's, yeah, that gives us some positive thoughts.
It's a two-way interview, buddy.
I'll jump in with my comments. You touched on it a little bit. I think the relationship between the commissioners and the executive director and the staff need to be fairly delineated. I don't see the role of the board is, I, I see us as a policymaking board. I don't see us down in the weeds trying to figure out if we're using the right herbicide and we're applying at the right time or the wrong time. We've got professional staff to do that. So if there are things that I don't understand, or I think might, we want to tweak or whatever, I, my thought process is it needs to go through the director, the executive director. And, um, at the same time, we, I expect that there are issues, if there's, you know, drug use in the park or somebody got arrested, that the executive director is gonna call us and tip us off that something's gone on. You know, so I, I think that relationship between the board, the executive director, and that needs to be, uh, very clear and solidified. And, you know, I, I think that's important.
I guess I can jump in a little too. My, my thoughts are, it's kind of like your family, the things you discuss on the inside of your house, you're all a unified front when you go on the outside of the house. So, um, no matter who we hire, we're gonna back them up. I mean, our job is to support the staff, support the, I may not agree that, you know, we use a warming house as an example. I may not agree if we close it on a certain day or a certain time of the day, or we do things a certain way. But my role as a commissioner is to relay to the community, there are reasons we do the things we do and, and support you guys, whether it's the executive director or the rest of the staff. And hopefully, it's, you know, everybody's mentioned it thus far, it's the communication piece. So, I may not like all the decisions that the executive director makes, but the public won't necessarily know that. So, you know, i- if you're successful, we're successful.
Yeah, I mean, I guess I would concur with sort of what Jerry said and Vicki said. Uh, but I think one of the things that Jerry said that was important is, is, is it's very important for us to know our role, so to speak, but also for you to respect and, and understand our role, meaning, I'm not going to get into the weeds on your day-to-day operations, but if there was, you know, a needle found in, in the, in a park and it was, and it's going to end up in the news, and I'm gonna get phone calls from the general public about it, I would appreciate the courtesy of a phone call from you to say that this is, because this is something that's at the level of explaining to the public. And again, um, if we, you know, when you communicate with us, "We're closing the warming houses at this time because of this, this, and this." I just, as Vicki said, need to have an answer to give to the people in the public. They don't have to agree with it. I don't necessarily have to agree with it. It just has to be a justifiable rationale that I can ex- or, I don't even use the word justifiable, a rationale that I can explain to them as to how that decision was made.
And for me, it's just making sure, going along with them, just making sure we're aligned. I, I think we're spoiled the way of commissioners that are in the community and very visible, and we hear from constituents. And that information gets back to you, and I think just keeping the lines of communication open. We're all in for the same reason. I mean, I'm not in it for me.
The money.
We're in it for.
The money.
For Fargo. Yeah, that's true. Forgot about that.
You have to feel comfortable that if there is an issue, good, bad, or indifferent, that you can come to us and lay it out. And whatever our reaction is, that we're all on the same team. Because at the end of the day, I started the job once, and my main job was to not make the boss look stupid. And I kind of feel like this three-legged stool that we have, all of us have that exact same purpose. It's not our job to make you look stupid, it's not your job to make your staff look stupid, and it's not the staff's job to let us have a, an inferior product that makes us look bad in the public. And so that's, but you have to feel comfortable that you can say that, and we have to be able to accept it when it comes at us. That would be my advice for success.
Thank you. Uh, so what do each of you see as priorities for the park district?
Well, Linenwood and Island Park. I, I, I guess my thought is having a plan. I think we, you, you alluded to this earlier. It's the, you know, you just run crazy because you gotta get all this stuff done. And then you just keep pushing Linenwood back, and how the pool, the pool will limber along one more year. It's coming up with a plan, getting it on paper, and having a, some target. How the pool, the pool will limber along one more year. It's coming up with a plan, getting it on paper and having a, some target dates. Just figuring out what we're doing.
In, in the same way, in this, you, you've been the interim, so we've been in cruise control for a while, but I felt even before that, you've just been in cruise control for a while. And now all of a sudden, we have all these things lining up. Lindenwood, Island Park, you name it, and nothing ever gets cheaper. And I think just laying out and I think that's working with the commissioners and saying, what are our priorities? What do we need to get done? Yonker Farm is another one. We've been talking about that since I've been on the board and it was before that. So, I think it's prioritizing, committing to a date, committing to a goal and getting some of these things wrapped up.
And I, I agree with all that was just said there and I think that comes back to the, the rationale or justification for the strategic plan and the vision because I think in the last few years, it's been safe to say that we as a park district have been running around chasing shiny, pretty feathers that we would grab and put into our hats. And unfortunately, you know, when we're grabbing all these things and sticking our hat, that, it's not that simple. So, we now went from busy, happy, good to a whole bunch of projects that we've got on our plate right now and so, you know, prioritizing how to get that done and get these shiny feathers to, to shine is, is, is a, I mean, I, is my personal thought and priority that we, but, but getting that strategic plan together so that we have a process of continuing to move forward on all these things while moving the district forward and, and making sure that none of these projects falls through the cracks and all the other facilities and stuff that we already have, continuing to maintain those and-
Day-to-day.
And not leaving anything or anyone behind in that process.
And I think our goal is to create a system of recreation for the citizens of Fargo. And all, everything that we've said are the steps that need to be in place to create that, so it's accessible to everyone, no matter what it is. As an uber goal.
Well, and I'll just, I'll just tack on and build a little bit based on everything that was said. To me, the, it's, the executive director is in the key spot to know, you know, how much deferred maintenance stuff that's coming online. And so, you've got to hold us accountable as commissioners and our feet to the fire that as we look at all these bright, because, I mean, who doesn't want to look at shiny objects and go, yeah, we, we need one of those, we need two of those, you know, so that's the, you know, because you've got the best position of knowing what's all out there and then we've got to work with you to understand, you've got to communicate that to us so, so we don't, you know, get too far out in front of our skis. And, you know, that's where, and so with the strategic plan in place, then we have to be accountable to it. And it's real easy to break away from that and go, oh, yeah, well, we got to go do this because it's really cool.
It designs a path to where we're, to where we're going.
I got a photogenic memory.
If we deviate off the path, it's much easier to get back on the path if we have a strategic plan.
Right, exactly. We need a plan. So, we can check it out, read it once in a while. Yeah, we are doing that.
Yeah, and I think we're, I mean, everybody's on board with getting back to that, at least the long-range plan for now. And that's going to help set up priorities and funding and how we're going to pay for it, so... So, what would be one priority you would see for myself if I was offered this position?
Should I just repeat my answer from the one before, Lindenwood and Island Park?
Well, for me, I mean, that's projects, that's Park District.
Well, just, I don't know how to exactly say convincing everyone you were the right choice, um, but I don't know that that's the, really the answer I'm looking for, that statement I'm looking for.
Let me try something while you think. Striking a balance between being the, the leader that you have been up to this point and what people, what you know that people respect and appreciate you and value you and taking that next step to becoming the executive director, yet not compromising those things in the, that were before that. I think, you know, when you were sitting in that deputy director role before, it was, it, you were still right there with the people. You're now talking about becoming executive director and eliminating that deputy position. So, striking a balance between being the guy that is the right fit for the job and, and being the, being the leader, the buck stops here person, the, the executive director. Does that make sense?
Yeah. I mean, and that's one reason why I feel getting rid of that deputy director lends itself to being more approachable, more a part of it. I mean, there's not that separation where the deputy director is dealing with the staff and the executive director is off doing whatever.
So, you're striking a balance between the two of those.
Yep.
So, I'm going to take a whack at this too because you talked early on about you wouldn't ask anybody to do what you wouldn't do yourself. And I get that and I, and I understand that mentality, but at the same time, we're paying you to be working up at this level now. And you've got staff, and you even referenced, I think it was, you were talking operations, that he's down doing stuff that he needs to be working at the director level. And I don't disagree. So, while you should, while you would go pick up that trash or you would clean that gutter or whatever, you got to be up here operating at this level. We can't have you too far down in the weeds. And, and I think, and that's where you've got to step yourself up. You got to delegate that and, and get, that's how you bring your staff up too. And then also, um, perception. You're, you're the, you're the front face of the Park District now, so things you do is a reflection of the Park District. You know, when you're one of the guys and you can kind of do, you know, whatever, you're, you're out doing that kind of stuff, that all works, but it's, it's kind of like you talk about, you know, when a commissioner shows up, they're afforded a lot of respect. Well, I think that you need to operate at that level too as an executive director, that there's a certain amount of, you know, reverence that needs to be, and I'm not trying to make you to go be king. Don't, don't get me wrong. I just think you need to carry yourself in a little bit different way than maybe you had in the past, simply because you're now the front face of the Park District.
I can't necessarily say there's one priority. I think for me, it's a shared priority, you with the commission. I guess I always tell people, I'm one of five. I have one voice, but we need three voices for anything to happen. So, I, I don't think I can specifically say I have one priority for you. I think there's a lot of things we can accomplish together.
Good.
I think you've been, you have, you've had the job for six months and it was a placeholder basically and you kept everything going. You've identified through this whole process, things that should be different to put us back on the mark of being the best between Seattle and Minneapolis. You know, it's easy, it's easy to compare with Bismarck and Grand Forks, but we shouldn't compare with them because we're considerably larger. So, in, take off the, if we take off the interim, then you become the head and that settles the waters, which you've been doing, but also puts all the buckets in line for future that just keep evolving beyond where we are now. I mean, we kind of evolved just naturally because they keep building new neighborhoods and we throw a park in there. So, we grow that way just because, out of our control, but things that you can control, like watching, watching the maintenance and, and analyzing. How long does it take to take this more from this location to the other location, which I know that you've got people working on, but delegating that down and holding them accountable so that, you know, that's where efficiencies come in and makes, makes it easier for you to open up funding so that you can shine on different things. So, I, I would just say own the job and that will make you successful.
Good. Thank you. That's all I got.
All right.
I didn't mean to, you, you, did you get a chance to say?
Did you get a chance to think of what you wanted?
I mean, I didn't-
No, I'm good. I'm good. Alec can always tell you later too, if that's the case.
What's that?
You know, you know, it, it's really the relationship. It's just having a relationship and communicating. I mean, that's what this is going to come down to, that the board has respect for the director and the director has respect for the board. Not just assume something because you hear something one place or the other and just making sure everybody's in the know when we need to be.
Right on.
Vice versa.
All right. Well, thank you very much. Um, we're going to be meeting next Monday to think about what our next steps are and then-